Today is October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is five thirty P. M. and we are in the Bosch-Freilich Meeting Room at Mandan City Hall. Mr. Newbauer, could you please take the roll?
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Here.
Braun.
Here.
Roar.
Here.
Schoberg.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
Ryan Heinzchen will lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, we have item C on the agenda. We have a new employee in Amy Berger. Let's go ahead and introduce her.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We are excited to announce. You want to come on this side?
Okay.
Cassidy Buchholz. She is our newest member of the Human Resource Department. She is on her third week of employment and started as Human Resource Generalist within our department. So Cassidy is a graduate from Dickinson State University and graduated with her Human Resource Management Bachelor's Degree. She comes to us from Edgewood Village Assisted Living and she is originally from Lair, Lair, North Dakota, which is a population of about eighty people in her town. So welcome, Cassidy.
Welcome, Cassidy. Thank you, Amy. Have all the Commissioners had time to review the agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve the agenda for October fifteenth.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Agenda item E, the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of October first, two thousand and twenty-four, Board of City Commissioners' regular meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve E one A, the minutes of the October first, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Consider approval of the minutes of the October third, two thousand and twenty-four, special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October third, two thousand and twenty-four, special meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item F and its public hearing. Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners. The first item that I have for you tonight is a variance request from M. Dotling Properties. This is for the Langang Home Center property. I have a location map on my screen if you can share it up there. This request would allow for the construction of a building addition on the property within the front yard setback required for the M.C. District for which the property lies within. This exhibit shows where the building addition would be located. It's in yellow and it would be added on to the building. That's also in yellow. The request would be to construct twenty feet into the setback area resulting in a fifteen-foot setback where thirty-five feet is required. The Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this request at their meeting on September twenty-third and identified a hardship due to water issues on the property where the building could be added on to in the rear. They don't want to construct a building there due to water problems in that corner of the property. Also worth noting, the property does already have a structure on it that is constructed well within the front yard setback for this district. Upon review of city records, we did not identify any granted variance or explanation for how that came to be. However, the Planning Commission did, as I said, consider this request at their September twenty-third meeting and recommends approval of the setback variance to permit the construction of the building where it is located and the recommendation is listed in your packet with a recommendation to approve. Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor Andrew, actually, the proposed building is actually going to be set back further than the one asked currently to the direction of the other ones. Is that correct?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, that is correct.
Any further questions for Andrew? Okay, hearing none. We're going to open up the public hearing. And we'll call for comments. Second call for comments. Third and final call for comments. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed.
I move to approve the setback variance of twenty feet as presented for the project outlined in the report.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar and a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item two under public hearing, consider preliminary plat and zone change from A agricultural to M. A. Industrial for Mandan Industrial Park fourteenth addition. Andrew.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, the next three items are housekeeping, or I guess map-keeping in nature. They do, however, require public hearings. The first item is a request from Central Bottling Incorporated. This is for the building on Old Red Trail that houses Pepsi. And this request would combine two properties into one and consolidate the zoning into a singular district. So Mandan Industrial Park fourteenth edition is not likely to result in any major changes to the land use or the appearance of the property. The preliminary plat is included within your packet. It is six point one-two acres in size. And as I stated, the entire property would be placed into the M. A. Industrial District. With this item, if you could call for a public hearing and approve the plat up here on public hearings and then go down to resolutions and ordinances number one for the approval of the first consideration of the zone change. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Andrew? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Any comments? Second call for comments. Third call for comments. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. And we will move to item K on your agenda. Andrew.
Mayor Freilich, I believe I will need a motion on the preliminary plat under public hearings and then the zoning.
Move to approve the preliminary plat for Mandan Industrial Park fourteenth edition.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. Resolutions and ordinances number one is the ordinance fourteen fifty-five, which would be the instrument that puts that all into the M. A. Industrial District for Mandan Industrial Park fourteenth. It will be back for a second consideration at our next meeting and staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
Move to approve the application and sponsorship of the project as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number three, consider requests for preliminary plat and exclusion de-annexation for Byer subdivision.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, this is an item that's been worked on for quite some time between the city and Lower Heartwater Resource District. It's been referred to as kind of the land exchange between the city and the Byer family in order for us to acquire a critical piece of property for the flood risk reduction project. This was introduced to the Planning Commission. Preliminary plat, rather, was introduced to the Planning Commission at its September twenty-third meeting and has a recommendation to approve. One item of note that's associated with this is an ordinance to exclude one and a half acres of the plat from the corporate boundary. Essentially, what happened is when the city made one and a half acres of land available for it to be combined with the Byers property, they would either need to annex their entire nine and a half or we would exclude our one and a half. The applicant, Byer family, does not want to be in city limits and they do not have any land uses on the property that really require being in city limits at this time. Therefore, the exclusion ordinance is provided and our recommendation is to approve that. So with this item, a motion can be made under public hearings for the preliminary plat and under resolutions and ordinances number two for the exclusion ordinance. Do you have any questions for me?
No questions. We'll open the public hearing. Any further comments? Second call for comments. Third and final call for comments. Public hearing is closed.
I'll move to approve the preliminary plat for the Byer subdivision.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Andrew, go ahead.
Number two under resolutions and ordinances would be the first consideration of ordinance fourteen fifty-six, which has been drafted with the exhibit of which would be detached or excluded from city limits. This was its first consideration. It will return at our next meeting for its second and the recommendation is to approve.
I'll move to approve the first consideration of ordinance fourteen fifty-six.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number four. Consider a vacation of Fifth Avenue Southeast and Minor Plat to be named Helbling seventh edition. Andrew.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, this request also has two parts with it. There is a minor plat that I have up here under public hearings, given its association with the public hearing for the right-of-way vacation. About three meetings ago, a request was brought to you to consider a public hearing for this item. Essentially, when Helbling second edition was platted, there was excess right-of-way for what would have been Fifth Avenue Southeast. It was never constructed. Signage was not put up for it, so you probably don't know where it is. It would have been to the west of the Stage Stop and the Corral Sales businesses. So at one point, the street was planned. It's never been developed. It's not needed anymore. And this action more formally returns it to being private property. So the associated plat for Helbling seventh edition is kind of the instrument that would do that. And on the screen, I can cursor over where that right-of-way was. It's this property here. And it would just be absorbed into the rest of the subdivision, cleaning it all up from about eleven lots in this area down to two. So the right-of-way vacation is an item that would need to be there'd need to be a public hearing for it and then it can be approved under resolutions and ordinances number three. And I ask that you approve the minor plat while we're up here on public hearings. Do you have any questions for me?
If not, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments regarding this? Second call for comments. Third and final call for comments. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed.
I move to approve the minor plat of Helbling seventh edition.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich, Commissioners, thanks for bearing with me as we jump up and down. Number three under resolutions and ordinances is the resolution of vacation for this item, Fifth Avenue Southeast from Helblings. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I'll move to approve the right-of-way vacation. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Thank you, Andrew. Onto item letter H, consent agenda. Bear with me. Item number one on the consent agenda, consider approval of monthly bills. Item number two, consider approval of the following raffle permits. North Dakota Semitals Association, Bismarck State College Mystic Athletic Club. Item number three, consider proclaiming November first, two thousand and twenty-four, as the extra mile day. Item four, consider a budget amendment to the two thousand and twenty-five Street and Utility Department's budget. Item five, consider approval to accept fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four COPS hiring grant funding of five hundred thousand dollars for four police officers. Item six, consider approval of two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four abatements for Darren and Megan Helbling. Item seven, consider approval to apply for two thousand and twenty-four America, the Beautiful Program Development Grant. Item eight, consider minor plat for replat of lots fifteen and sixteen, block one, Shores at Lakewood Edition. Number nine, consider approval of the two thousand and twenty-four title, V.I. Non-Discrimination and ADA Plan. Item ten, assessments for weed cutting of two thousand and twenty-four, health and safety of two thousand and twenty-four, sidewalks of two thousand and twenty-four, delinquent alarm system accounts for two thousand and twenty-four and delinquent utility billing accounts for two thousand and twenty-four. Item eleven, consider minor plat for Joseph Edition. That is your consent agenda. Any discussion? Motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as Mayor Freilich just read.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Move on to number J, new business. Consider water and sewer improvements for District sixty-five design agreement. Jerick.
Mayor Commissioners, hello. The item we have before you is the design agreement for water and sewer improvement District sixty-five. This is for the Monte Drive area just west, or what we've been calling the Monte Drive area. It's the neighborhood just west of Lewis and Clark Elementary. It's kind of this, if you show my screen. It's this kind of triangular area just west of Lewis and Clark Elementary School. This area, the last time that we had a commission meeting, had twenty-six water main breaks. And as of today, it has twenty-seven water main breaks. There was a water main break that occurred the day after our commission meeting. I think that kind of emphasized.
It was hours after the commission.
Hours after the commission.
And it was my sidewalk.
Yeah, emphasizes the need for this project, I think. This area was evaluated as part of our two thousand and twenty-five reconstruction project preliminary engineering phase. So this design agreement would be an amendment to that preliminary engineering contract. The design agreement is for four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. The original contract was for two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, so about seven hundred thousand dollars total so far. And the total estimate for the project is eight point seven million. So we are still under, under ten percent for engineering fees on that, so it's completely reasonable price. And we would expect after our design phase is complete, we would come back with another amendment for the construction administration phase of the engineering contract. So we would be in that, probably in that ten percent range for engineering on this project. And that is completely reasonable. I also, just today, received word that it would be, if we, for our suggested motion, I, Carrie helped me supply you guys with kind of a revised suggested motion. We would be applying for state water commission pre-construction funding on this. And one of the requirements for that application is providing minutes at a commission meeting that shows the commission's approval to make that application. So I just, I revised my suggested motion today, but our recommendation is to approve the engineer's report and enter the, into the agreement as presented, as well as approve application for state water commission funding. If you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
Jerick, this is essentially to get the ball rolling on that health and safety issue for the replacement of the water mains.
Mayor Commissioner Schoberg, yes, absolutely. This is, this would, this would kick off survey work, which is nice to get in before winter, before snowfalls. And yeah, really gets the, really gets the ball rolling on project initiation, yeah.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Approve the engineer's report, enter into an engineering design agreement and apply for the state water commission pre-construction funding.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number two under new business, consider approval of the verification of six special assessment districts.
Mayor Comis-, whoops, sorry.
You can read them. That's fine.
Mayor Commissioners, yeah, we have been going through this summer, the verification process for six special assessment districts. They are, oh boy. Special assessment district two hundred and twenty-two. This is the shared use path along the south side of Nineteenth Street. I am bringing that, I'm going to bring these up on the map as I go through them. Number two twenty-four, this is the combined developer project up here, Rockwood and Sunrise View Estates. Two twenty-six, this is West Hills Fifth Subdivision, residential subdivision in the northwest part of town. Two twenty-seven, this is the Heck Edition improvements, which would include kind of all of the infrastructure around the new high school site. Two twenty-nine, this would be the Shores at Lakewood Phase One project, which would include this loop just north of McKenzie, as well as the extension McKenzie to the west. And Improvement District two thirty-two, which was our kind of reconstruction slash maintenance district, included a lot of chip ceiling work in between division and the interstate, as well as several reconstruction and mail-in overlay scopes of work in the kind of plain view area. We held a public input, or a public hearing with the Special Assessment Commission on August twenty-eighth and we didn't receive any input. So we haven't had any pushback on any of these special assessments that we're proposing. I think all of, all of the special assessments were either at or under our estimated amounts when these projects were kind of initiated. So it's our recommendation to approve, approve the proposed assessments as certified by the Special Assessment Commission.
Mayor Jerick, I have just a question. Looking at these street improvement projects here, and let's say I see a street improvement district two twenty-four, there's a dollar amount of four million, seven twenty-one thousand, zero five five. That cost, is that the cost of the project?
Mayor Commissioner Roar, that is, that would be the cost of the project plus whatever other soft costs that the city might have incurred.
And then that particular cost there, is some of that to be paid for by alternate sources other than assessments?
For some of these, yes. For others, well, no, the, I think these would have, these would have the, Greg, do these have the city contributions pulled out, these numbers? Or Riley? Can't remember. For any of these districts. For two thirty-two, did we have? Okay, okay. So yeah, that should be reflected.
Well, I'm looking at, when I look at these dollar amounts here, then, and I'm trying to come up with a visualization of how much the people living in areas have to pay for special assessments, you know. And I notice that some of them are, are one of them is five-year and you got fifteen-year or whatever it may be with a dollar amount behind that. So when I look at, for example, a street improvement district two two-nine at two million, three hundred and seventy-one, five hundred and sixteen thousand, years assessed fifteen. That is the amount then to be special assessed to property owners?
Correct. Yes.
I just make sure I want to understand the figures that are there and what is borne by the property owner versus what is paid for by state or tax money or whatever have you. Are there supplemental forms of that?
Yes, most of these are developer-led projects, so they wouldn't have a whole lot of external funding coming into them. But for Street Improvement District two thirty-two, I know that we did have some municipal infrastructure funds put into that project related to reconstruction buydown. So they wouldn't be special assessed for that, that portion. And the Street Improvement District two hundred and twenty-two, that five hundred and eighty-three thousand number would be, would not include the eighty percent federal funds on the construction side of things. So that project was, you know, probably closer to two million dollars when you include federal, the federal funding portion of it.
So to really understand, you'd have to look at the particulars of each one of these projects.
Yes.
What's going on here.
Yep.
And get a, get a handle on that.
Yep.
Lot of money here for upcoming projects, a lot of money.
Absolutely.
Looking at that, so I can see what's in store for this here. How much can we afford?
Yes.
Those type of things.
Yep, those discussions are happening, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jerick. I must be lost in space or something, but are these all already completed?
These, these are all substantially completed to the point where we can make very comfortable estimates at what the final project, or what the final product would cost. For example, Street Improvement District two twenty-four, we put these estimates together prior to the approval of that turn lane that is being installed there. But we had very good numbers on what that turn lane would cost and we incorporated that into the special assessment verification process, so.
And I think is it true, or am I off, one or two, that four of the six here are, I think you said it earlier, part of brand-new subdivisions or streets or extensions thereof where that cost will be passed on to the property purchaser at the time of completion?
Mayor Commissioner Schoberg, that's correct.
Could you bring those up again, Jerick? Just run through it real quick.
Yes. Let me see if I can find my place here. I have a list here and I'll bring it up. Here they are. Try and zoom in a little bit here. So these, these middle four, Sunrise View Estates and Rockwood, West Hills Fifth, Heck Edition and Shores at Lakewood are all new construction developer-led. What was that? Oh, on the map?
Yep.
Yep.
Just point them out real quick. Again.
Heck Edition, the infrastructure around the high school site brought up right here.
And Jerick, that is strictly around the high school and does not include Terra Valley. Is that correct?
It does not include Terra Valley. There was some street light improvements in this Seventh Avenue Northwest and Sixth Avenue Northwest area that did include some of these immediately adjacent properties, but nothing west of Eighth.
Thank you.
Yep. Sunrise View Estates and Rockwood, this is a developer-led project and the special assessments would be, were coordinated with assessments would be, were coordinated with the developers, or, you know, we work closely with the developers on these, and they would be developer costs. West Hills Fifth, same thing, new construction, developer-led project. And then Shores at Lakewood Phase One, down here, by Lakewood Elementary, developer-led project. Some of these costs associated with the improvement of McKenzie Drive were spread to future phases of Shores at Lakewood, but minor compared to what, what, what was included on Phase One.
You know, there's something else that just came into my mind now with this, this wonderful technology here that I don't have a clue how to use. The foot, ever-expanding footprint of our city is huge, and we're growing fast, and this helps to, shall I say, illustrate that for the people that are watching. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any further questions? Carrie Dunn?
I move to approve the special assessments for certification on street improvement districts, number 222, number 224, number 226, number 227, number 229, and number 232. I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioners Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number three, consider finance resolution for street improvement districts and warrants. Justin Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, now that the verification on those districts is, is finalized, we can move on to the financing piece. So on August 21st, 2024, the city issued a request for proposals to three financial institutions located in Mandan for the banks to provide financing for the city's street improvement districts consisting of a five-year term, seven-year term, and a fifteen-year term. The city received two proposals by the September 9th, 2024 deadline. Based on the proposals received, Bavera Bank submitted the lowest non-bank qualified interest rate of 4.95% for the five-year term and 5.125% for the seven-year term. The proposals submitted for the fifteen-year term were higher in comparison to the projected bond interest rate provided by John Lundby with Colliers Securities on September 17th, 2024. The proceeds of the warrants will be used to reimburse the city for the costs of the improvements in the following districts. Street Improvement District 222, which is Nineteenth Street Trail, Phase Two, for five hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Street Improvement District 232A, which is a portion of the 2023 street maintenance, for two million, five hundred and six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. There is a proposed resolution in your packet, and I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Justin?
These, the ones that we, I delineated here, they're for the, the shorter term?
Correct, the five-year and the seven-year terms, and, and Greg will be speaking to the bonds for the fifteen-year terms on the next item.
Okay, so these, these were opened up to local banks?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I'll move to approve the financing resolution for the following street improvement districts and warrants. Street Improvement District number 222, Nineteenth Street Trail, Phase Two, definitive improvement warrant, series 2024A, as in Adam. And Street Improvement District number 232A, 2023 Street Maintenance, definitive improvement warrant, series 2024B, boy. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number four, consider refunding improvement bonds, series 2024. Greg?
Mayor Commissioners, we have this evening, John Lundby from Colliers Securities to provide you the results of the sale this morning from the city's refunding improvement bonds, series 2024. I'll have John come up and give you the results of that sale.
Evening, Mayor Freilich. Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be with you here, with you tonight. Again, my name's John Lundby with Colliers, and I'm in Bismarck, and I'm here to present the results of the public sale we conducted this morning for the city's refunding improvement bonds, series 2024 bond issuance. We're very pleased to report the sale went very well, and with all recent turmoil in the markets, and thanks to a recent decline in that interest rate market that we've been waiting for, for a couple of years, the winning bid for the issue resulted in a true interest cost of 3.481% to the city on a fifteen-year maturity. These bonds are callable in nine years or in 2033. The final par amount of the issue is eleven million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, as shown in, in the updated resolution. A little bit about the sale, we saw five bids from across the country, firms located all over, from New York City, Milwaukee, Boston, Denver. It was a strong response from the market with a very tight competition between the five bids received, again, with the winning bid being that 3.481%. I've handed out, prior to the meeting, the updated credit rating report from Moody's. It's a public debt rating agency that we use to get this issue rated, and this, the Moody's reaffirmed the city's existing rating of AA3, and that's something of which the city, commission, and staff should all be very proud. Arson Stewart Wagner, as bond counsel, has prepared the resolution before you. With your approval, we will move forward to finalize all figures and documentation for a closing on November 4th. At this time, before answering any questions, I'd just like to, to thank the commission, staff, Greg, Justin, for all the great work. It's really appreciated and, and a job well done. So with that, I'll answer, any questions?
Any questions for John?
So the, the city, you'll have to excuse me, I'm not a money guy, so. City's got a, a bond rating, is that the correct terminology of a AAA?
It's AA3.
AA3?
So in a, in a bond rating world, your AAA ratings would be US government, and then for the next tranche down of investment grade would be double A categories, and in the Moody's world, they do AA1, 2, and 3, and that's the top echelon under the US government rating of AAA.
Okay.
And so, for example, the state carries a AA1 rating. City of Fargo's AA2, and then the City of Mandan would be AA3, City of West Fargo would be AA3 as well.
Okay.
Very strong ratings.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions for John? John, just stress again, AA3 is very strong.
Yep, that is, that is your top-tier investment grade category underneath the US government at AAA.
That'd be like having a credit score of eight hundred?
That or the ability to print your own money, depending on how you want to look at that. Political jokes aside.
Okay. We need a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution creating the fund of an improvement district and authorizing the issuance of improvement warrants. That's the first point. Second point is I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of a million, eleven million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, and my computer just died. Can anybody pick up?
Refunding improvement bond series 2024. Thank you.
Okay. And I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of eleven million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, refunding improvement bond series 2024.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Greg and Justin. Item number five, consider a letter of support for Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority in contribution to the Bismarck-Mandan Metropolitan Planning Organization, membership in the Rail Authority's Government Partners Program. Andrew?
Good evening, Mayor Freilich. Commissioners, Mayor Freilich, you've been following this item to your involvement in the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board. We did receive a formal request from the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the cities of Mandan and our jurisdictional partners within the MPO to become members in the Government Partners Program. Stepping back a bit, Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority is a coordinating entity for the restoration of passenger rail service through our neck of the woods. Essentially, it would be at least once daily train service operated, like the Amtrak, from Chicago to Seattle, through Fargo, to perhaps out to Bozeman along I-94. Service would be restored as soon as 2033, and the program's basically existing to provide a preferred level of engagement with the Rail Authority and with the Federal Railroad Administration so that we could perhaps be as best prepared for the restoration of service through our community. That could look like a lot of things, but one possibility would be to possibly be the location of the passenger rail station for the metro area. So the two items included with this include a request to join the Governor's, Government Partners Program. We did do some work with the MPO and the DOT to allow us all to join together without that work, and we're certainly appreciated, appreciative of that. Without that work, we would have had to pay the full membership ourself. We can now share it with a federal contribution, so we'd be paying 240 to 690 annually for the membership in the partner program. And the second item would be to allow us to submit the letter of support that's included within the agenda. If you have any questions about the Passenger Rail Authority Government Partners Program or the letter, I can try and take them. Mayor Freilich might be able to as well.
Would that annual, annual financial impact stay pretty close to that 240 to 700 dollar figure?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Schoburg, yes, it would, it would always lie within that, that range unless something would happen where the MPO is not pursuing that subscription on our behalf, then we would need to pursue it independently, or we could, of course, choose to not be in the program. So every year, we'll have an idea of what it will cost us, and it will be brought to this board for your interest.
So if we can bring passenger rail transportation back to the Mandan depot, that may have potential impact for downtown improvements nine years from now? Potentially, guessing?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Schoburg, yeah, we, we anticipate a variety of benefits to the metro area through the restoration of passenger rail service, not only for our residents to be able to get out, but for folks to be able to visit, perhaps stay, attend tournaments or conferences, or for medical reasons, a variety of, a variety of benefits would come from additional access to the metro.
We've certainly got a, an abundance of points of interest here in Mandan, Morton County, Bismarck, and Burley County, and although it might be nine years out, this will give the citizens an idea of how, how long it takes to bring something good to a community when you're working with a bunch of different agencies, so I see nothing but good out of this. In many, on many different platforms. Thank you.
Andrew, I'd like to key in on that a little bit. So, so we're talking rail service, and we have, if they're coming through I-94 through our area, there's many stops that they could pick and choose. How far into that process are we? For example, they could stop in Bismarck and then continue on to, don't know where. So I'm just wondering, where would we be in the possibility of a stop?
Commissioners, it's, it's not clear exactly where they'll pick in the metro. We, we feel that we do have some advantages, given the relative abundancy of city-owned lots along the, the rail track, owning a depot, of course, the railroad heritage are things that we do view as strengths. Regarding the more broad network, it's our understanding as staff that it's not meant to serve Anakin and McKenzie and Steel and Driscoll. It'll probably be more of a Bismarck-Mandan metro, and then Jamestown Valley City-Fargo. So it'll have, it'll have fewer stops than, than you might think. But things like station selection are not, are not happening quite at this time. I, I do know from recent discussions with the Metropolitan Planning Organization that they are earmarking the year 2026 for a, a metro area study of potential rail station locations. So like a lot of transportation projects, I would assume that we'll have to study it first and go through that public engagement process and some background analyses, and then a report will be generated, if that's the avenue that's taken, to identify feasible locations, so future items.
Any more questions for Andrew?
I would say that if we're gonna, think we're gonna have a seat at the table, that this is something we should be part of, so I would move to join the Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority Government Partner Program.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number six, consider approval of construction engineering amendment for SID 231, Eighth Avenue Reconstruction. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, this is an engineering service agreement for the Eighth Avenue Northwest Reconstruction Project, which is the reconstruction of Eighth Avenue Northwest between Old Red Trail and 24th Street Northwest, just west of the new high school site. This engineering, the construction engineering amendment is related to some changes that occurred during the project, most notably the conversion of the path along the high school site from an asphalt trail or asphalt shared-use path to a concrete shared-use path. The additional coordination required by our consultant engineer related to the WBI conflict at 24th Street and Eighth Avenue Northwest, and the extended lead times for street light installation. Street, streetlights aren't anticipated to be delivered until October, probably pretty soon here, so that extended the anticipated project schedule from August to October, and that does have, it just, it just adds, adds time to the contract. So that's what these, that's what this amendment is related to. If you have any further questions, I can try and answer them, but we're recommending approval of the amendment as presented. I should note that this, these costs would be included on the special assessment district and would be, you know, a hundred percent assessed back to the benefiting properties, which is the, the properties immediately east and west of the segment that we're talking about.
So can you bring that back up, please? So what portion of that road or all of Eighth Avenue is done? Is it done down to, to the north?
No, it is not completed to the north. The segment between 24th Street and 27th Street, and from 27th Street and the 27th Street between Eighth Avenue Northwest and 1806 was originally part of the scope of the project, but that project got protested out a few years back, and then the scope was reduced to just this segment in the interest of keeping 1.4 million dollars of federal funds that were allocated to the project. And then we reapplied for about four million dollars of federal funds to complete the kind of leftover Eighth Avenue Northwest and 27th Street North. In, I think we're scheduled for 2028, but we're going to try and get that design completed and try and build that as soon as possible.
So you said the properties to the east and west. Am I correct in saying that there is no residential properties then in that segment?
Correct.
Jerick, just bring that up again, quick, that map. Okay, so that, that's- Okay, so that section behind the high school between Walmart, so that has storm water, right? Eighth Avenue?
Yes.
And does it flow on, does it go on 24th?
The, does it, I think there's an outlet north of 24th, and it goes into a temporary ditch, which would be replaced with storm sewer when we come back with that next project.
Okay. Commissioners?
I'll move to approve the construction engineering amendment for the Eighth Avenue Northwest Reconstruction Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number seven, consider approving and sponsoring an application for a 2027 pedestrian trail project. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, for the NDDOT has that Transportation Alternatives Program that is intended to make kind of multimodal improvements around town. At the last commission meeting, we had brought forth two applications to submit, and then we had also kind of come up with a third idea for an improvement, which would be along Collins Avenue north of 14th Street, that shared-use path that kind of blends into Collins Avenue right there. Mandan Parks had also kind of come up with a Transportation Alternatives Project immediately north of the project area that we had identified. So in the interests of kind of taking advantage of economy of scale and consolidating efforts and trying to be as efficient as possible, we asked the Parks District to include our project within their project. And the way that this has been done in the past is that the city has kind of acted as a pass-through for the Mandan Parks to receive these types of grants. They aren't eligible to apply for TA grants, so they use the city as kind of a middleman to access this type of funds. And we had historically just special assessed 100% of the costs back to the Mandan Parks, and they agreed to that. In this particular instance, because our proposed project is being included in their proposal, in their application, we do have a kind of a minor sales tax proposed proposal that would be 20% of the construction costs, of the local construction costs, as well as 20% of the engineering costs. It is a $925,000 project, and if we do that math, it goes, it comes out to be about $60,000 out of the sales tax fund, with the rest of it being special assessed to the Mandan Parks District. It'd be our recommendation to approve the application and sponsorship as presented, and I can try and answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have a map with those trails on?
I do, yes, I have it pulled up on the screen right now. The portion that we had proposed was down here on the south side, right next to Eagles Park, just on the west side of Eagles Park, make some safety improvements right there. And then Mandan's, Mandan Parks Project was a mill and overlay along 1806, as well as a reconstruction portion in the middle here, related to drainage improvements, I'm pretty sure.
Mayor Jared, is basically most of us going to renovating the current path?
Mayor Commissioner, that is correct.
So the city would be responsible for 301,000?
The city would be responsible for about 60,000.
60,000. So when you look at that local share, the, or 60,000, the park would be the parking record, would be the other part?
200, they'd be the, they'd be responsible for the remaining 240,000 of local responsibility, and then we would have about $600,000 of federal funds allocated to the project.
This is a particular, it's supposed to go all the way out to Harmon Lake, it hasn't quite reached out there yet, has it?
No, no, it hasn't. It's, yeah, very close. 1,000 feet, I'm being told.
1,000 feet short?
Yep.
Close, but not close enough.
Very close.
Jerick, could you do me a favor and bring that map up again, please?
Yep.
And can you focus in on that, that area right there?
Yep, absolutely.
And they're gonna be doing some?
I believe they're gonna be raising, raising the trail. I think that's the current, really current proposed little trail raising in this area.
That's extremely important to do that, at that location.
I would, I would have to, I would have to rely on the engineer to say that, but I know that there have been some talks of issues in that area.
I can attest to the fact that it's extremely important to raise that part of the trail right there.
Yep.
Due to flash flood concerns, so. I don't see any option. We need to protect the people that use that, which could include high school people that live up north along that trail, and there's a lag period of 20 minutes from the time a deluge will hit upstream to the time that that flood wall will go through that culvert there and hit that bike trail. So there's no option here, we gotta do it.
Jerick, sorry, go ahead, Dennis.
Jerick, regarding, we have quite a few miles of walking trail, like the one walking trail that goes along Old Trail, the ones down south. When these walking trails start to wear out and stuff like that, does the park board fix those up again? No, we don't have to participate and keep those things up, do we, as a city?
Mayor Commissioner Roar, typically no. I think that vast majority of the shared-use paths around town are being maintained by the Parks District. I think there might be some exceptions to that, but they're pretty active on getting mill and overlays done on those, on those shared-use paths.
Why are we having more of a participation this one up here, then?
And this particular instance is because we're proposing participation because Mandan Parks is including an improvement that we had proposed, a safety improvement that we had proposed, and they were coming up with, and we're basically just partnering on an application rather than sending in two applications to compete against each other, and just in the interest of being partners.
It's a way to do business.
Yeah.
Continue your situation.
Yeah.
And our part, the southern part, the green, can you pull that baby up again, please?
Yes.
Okay, so that does include the part of the bike path that crosses beneath I-94?
Yes, there would be proposed drainage improvements in that area.
Okay. That's another nightmare spot there for people that walk and bike, so.
Yeah.
Anything we could do to improve that would be much appreciated as well.
Yeah, I think it's a good project, and I think it would be very competitive. There's no guarantee that we'll be awarded or, you know, but I think we better try.
Okay, thank you. Here we go. I'll move to approve the application and sponsorship of the project as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Move on to Agenda Item K, but we've already handled that, so we'll move on to other business. Is there any other business before the board? Seeing none. Future dates for meetings, November 5th, 2024 at 5:30, November 19th, 2024 at 5:30, and December, December, December 3rd, 2024. That went quick, right? And with that, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion is second. Adjourned.